Order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski. Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
May.
Trustee May. Thank you.
And Supervisor Bussie. Present. All right, so we've got the roll call here. Any public comment? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda, authorization for payroll bills for the town fund, general assistance, road department, and sewer, and then my reports for social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, and the transportation and financial. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, then we have the approval of the minutes for December 18th, 2023, the regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? If not, roll call.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. I'd like to, if we can ask for a motion here, to take the new business item number four, paid leave law discussion and policy approval. If we could make a motion to move that forward to the presentation space, our attorney is here and that gives him a chance to get his presentation out there. We can then take a vote and he can move on.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Jason, Jason Tremblay, our attorney, will do a stunning and enlightening presentation.
Sure, thank you very much. This should not take long, but I did want to take a few minutes to talk to the board about very significant change in impacts on paid leave laws and for our townships. So, a little bit of background first, though, as I'm sure you're aware, it came up last time, there's a number of paid leave laws that are circulating out there that apply. And I kind of want to set the groundwork first, talk about that, because we have the state law called the Illinois Paid Leave For All Workers Act. And that was effective as of January 1st of this year. In essence, it allows for 40 hours of paid leave, up to 40 hours of paid leave, for employees to use for any reason at any time, very little notice, for a year. At the same time, this is why I bring this background, Cook County also has essentially saying the exact same thing. The reason why I bring that up is if you're not otherwise covered under the state, I'm sorry, local ordinance, i.e. a Cook County or a city county ordinance, you're also paid leave for all workers that apply. You hear that? Should I bring that over here?
Check.
So the reason why I bring that up is because there's a little bit of an initial issue about what law applies. And so so the reason why I bring that up is, now, wait, now it hears, okay, I really had to go right into this thing, is which law applies. So the Cook County ordinance will apply, will generally apply to all entities, including political entities, local political entities within Cook County, unless they're in a city, a municipality that has opted out. We're in Elk Grove Village, I'm not sure right now whether Elk Grove is opted out. But if it hasn't, then we're governed by Cook County, because Cook County would have a similar or more stringent paid leave law. So right now, and the reason why we had to wait a little bit is whether or not the state law applies or Cook County applies, it really effectively means the same thing for the township. And what it really boils down to is that we had to look at what leave the township employees were entitled to before and after. And so that's what I was working with Paul on, to try to come up with something that would afford these township employees the rights that they're entitled to, whether it's under the county law or under the state law, and at the same time, not completely change, i.e. either take benefits away or extend too many benefits beyond that. And so what we ended up landing on is the township had an existing vacation policy. It's in the policy, it's on page 13, what's before you. They also had a personal days' policy, an existing personal days' policy, and that was on page 14. And of course, the township also has a sick leave policy. So in light of the fact that now under the law, employees are entitled to earn up to 40 hours of paid leave for any reason and giving very little notice, what we ended up doing to make it revenue neutral is also to extend the benefits to the employees that they're entitled to. We ended up, just for your information, of increasing basically what's the paid, the existing personal days' policy from three days to five days, that's 40 hours, and then taking away two days of vacation. What does this do? It basically means that employees will get two less vacation days, which have restrictions, but they'll get two more paid personal days that they can use for any reason at any time with very little notice, which is in compliance with both the Cook County ordinance as well as the state law. The only, and the way we updated this, just so you know, under the, both the state and the county, you can frontload 40 hours, and in that case, you don't have to roll it over from year to year. So the way that this is drafted is that all employees their first year, okay, whether they're part-time or full-time, will earn one hour for every 40 hours worked. So that one hour paid leave for every 40 hours worked during their first year, and until the December 31st, after one full year. So it's kind of like, not a probationary time period, but to see whether they work out they're going to earn this leave over time as opposed to get it all upfront. But after they've worked for one year, then full-time employees will have it front-loaded on 40 hours. So on January 1st, they'll get 40 hours. That's kind of similar, it's not kind of similar, it's very similar to how the old personal policy, personal leave policy worked, just they get two more days. So that's how that's set for full-time employees. The question, and one of the reasons why I want to bring this up is, what do we do with part-time employees after they've worked for a year? Do we want to front-load it and therefore front-load it as of January 1st after one full year? In that case, the benefit is you don't have to kind of count for it and roll it over. It's a use-it-or-lose-it policy. But we alternatively, for part-time employees, could earn it, or they could accrue it over time, similar to what they'd be doing their first year. So that's kind of, if you look on page 14, that's one of the questions that I wanted to pose to the board. You know, to me, it's probably easier, not to me, I think administratively, it's probably easier, because I understand you only have three or four, maybe two or three part-time employees, to front-load it after one full year, similar to the full-time employees. All we would have to do, though, is kind of extrapolate out and figure out how much to front-load. If they work, let's say, 20 hours a week, right, 20 hours a week would be two hours a month, right? So two hours a month. So you'd have to figure that out. What would they earn during a year during their normal schedule? Figure that out. You front-load that on January 1st after one full year, and you just have to account for it so that if they end up going more than that, and they're entitled to more paid leave, you basically issue it at that time. So if your part-time employees, all two or three of them, have pretty regular hours, you know they're going to be working, you know, 150 hours or whatever, 150 days a year or something like that, you can figure that out and front-load. And that might be easier, because then you're treating them similar to the full-time employees, you're just giving them less paid leave, if that makes any sense. So that's kind of one of the issues, and one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this to your attention, is how does the township want to handle, you know, the two or three part-time employees that you have? Because we'll want to incorporate that into this policy. And if I haven't confused you yet, yeah, you just wait. That's really what we have to decide. And I'm happy to answer questions on that, but once we figure that out, then I can finalize this policy, and we can issue it and let the township employees know. We've created, started creating a memo, kind of outlining some of these things. It's a lot more simple and easy digest than what I just went through, but it is what it is. So again, I think the issue is part-time employees, do we front-load after a full year? Do we just continue to have them earn it over time, which would be one hour for every 40 hours worked? And in that case, just so you know, if they accrue it over time, one hour for every 40 hours, you have to allow that at least a certain amount to roll over from year to year. So that creates a little bit of a, just an accounting issue that internally you have to deal with. Question?
That's what I was going to ask you, because you answered there at the end, is the fact that I read somewhere that if they're a part-time person, they can earn up to 40 hours, they can roll it up to 40 hours over into the following year, but they can max out at 80, and then they can receive no more until they use some of those.
Correct. So the question is, how much can you allow them roll over? Under the state law, the regulations provide you can actually earn and roll over up to 80 hours. The Cook County ordinance, just to show, doesn't necessarily, doesn't have any regulations yet, so I assume it would be similar, but it's uncertain right now, because they passed it like three weeks ago.
And after 80 hours, it's use-it or lose-it, it drops off to 80?
After 80, you can stop and prohibit the leave from continuing to accrue, and you can have them use it before they earn any more. So you can kind of cap it at that point, if that makes any sense. But again, that goes out, all that, all that analysis kind of goes out the door if we figure, wow, if they work all the hours they're supposed to, they will get two and a half days of paid leave under this, let's just front-load that on January 1st. Again, January 1st, after one full year of continuous employment. So we're not doing this for full or part-time employees during their first year.
So I just, I guess I still don't quite, so the first year it's accrued, is what it is?
Yeah, the way it's done right now, yeah.
You can't use it till the end, till the next year, basically?
Well, under this, you can, you can actually, if it's truly front, well, no, no. If you're accruing it over time, you can use it as you earn it.
Accrue it.
As you earn it. And I mean, technically speaking, you can, you can, you can have a new employee wait 90 days before they use it, meaning they can accrue it, but they can't use it for 90 days, but they're still accruing it. So, you know, they can still use it. So again, I don't want to get hyper-technical about that aspect of it, but yes, during their first year, you can put restrictions on when they can use it, but they're accruing it from day one.
Right, so they, if they can use it, you could say, just you make it simple, they can use it as they accrue it. And then at the, at the end of the year, let's say they've, they've got, they haven't used it all, it can roll over.
Yep.
And it'll be immediately added to that 40 front-end that you front, the front-end-loaded it.
Correct.
Now, if they use it all right up front and then resign, it's tough luck.
Yeah, it's not really, so, well, the good thing about this, if you want my honest opinion, and again, this is more from the employer's side, this separate bucket is kind of use-it-or-lose-it, meaning if you quit with a bank of days, they're not payable upon termination. Vacation is a different story, right? Vacation policy is different. There's more restrictions on that as well. Under this, they use it, or, you know, if they, once they separate, they don't, it's not payable upon terminations, like unlike a vacation policy or a regular.
But they could, let's say they carry 20 hours over, and they have 60 hours then starting a year.
Yeah.
They could take two months off and then step down.
Well, not two months off. I mean, if they had 40, if they had 20 hours or 30 hours, whatever, they could take a week off. Now, again, this law, the notice requirements are much more liberal when it comes to what notice an employee can provide, right? The issue under these new laws is not necessarily the amount of leave that employees are entitled to. Most, every client I ever have allows this amount of leave. The issue is, it only allows employers to man no more than seven days of leave, of notice for foreseeable leave. So if you had a bank of 40 hours, and you wanted to say, hey, next Monday, I'm going to go to a week for a week vacation in Mexico, there's very little an employer can do. That's really the, from my perspective, the problem with this, is it allows employees to take leave for any reason, really with little or no notice.
I heard that some of the, some of the governmental bodies, though, are saying they need to know, they need to be informed so much time beforehand.
Yeah, so there is a, I don't want to rely upon it, there is a carve-out, or a, at least in the state law, which, which from my perspective, it is going to be similar to the Cook County, is that if the policy clearly outlines the circumstances upon which the employee would, you know, we need to be given more notice, there might be an exception. And so, but that would be rarely invoked. I could see a circumstance for, I have a client right now, it's a small daycare center in the city, it's governed by actually the city ordinance, but putting that to the side, you know, it has staffing obligations, right? It has to have certain amount of teachers or staff per student, or students per staff. And then at some point, they got to shut down classes. So, so, you know, we reached out, we reached out to the city and said, listen, what happens if five people want to take off? Do we have the right to say no for the two or three people that sort of submitted their request late? And the answer is, yeah, under those circumstances, you likely could. But we'd have to be very careful, and I'm not sure if that would apply to the township, where you'd have to be careful, really delineate that in the policy, right? I mean, I don't know if there's a circumstance where four people took off here, the government was shut down.
We had a township at a situation where one person was medical, one person
Yeah.
took extended leave, and they couldn't handle all their, all their
Yeah.
social, all their general assistance and emergency assistance cases. We had to go and help them out.
Yeah. You know, that's going to have to probably be on a little bit of a case-by-case basis. I think, you know, absent clearly outlining within the policy the circumstances by which that could occur.
You need to say?
It's a risk.
You need to say that in the policy?
Yeah, yeah, you do.
That there will be circumstances when?
You actually have to be more specific and say, you know, in, you know, I guess you could, again, the regulations don't really expressly provide this, and we're just kind of getting used to this right now, but this is what happens when you, when you pass a law without really requiring any input or asking for any input from employers. But, you know, I'm basically telling clients and companies, whatever they are, to be as specific as possible. Like if, you know, you know, like in that example I gave you with the school, it would be, you know, to the extent that we don't have adequate staffing as mandated by the law to, you know, keep a room open, we sort of the right to, you know, deny a request for leave under this paid leave law. I can't say that that would work on every occasion, but at least gets us covered. So if there are circumstances where, you know, you could say that during, you know, assessment time, only, you know, no more than three people can, can, you know, take off during, during this 30-day assessment or reassessment period, you know, something like that I could see coming into play. But just kind of saying, well, we reserve the right to deny it under, you know, any circumstances that we deem fit, may not pass muster. It may, but I'm not telling clients to rely upon that.
Well, if you have circumstances where it's all bus drivers, so suddenly you wouldn't be able to provide bus service to people that need dialysis.
Agreed.
Because all of your caseworkers suddenly are gone at the same time, you couldn't process any E R G A. All of a sudden, you have, I don't think it's quite the issue for youth services, but, I mean, and in food pantry, we do have volunteers, so that wouldn't be. But I think for social services, and well, and adult and family counseling, that could be an issue too, if you suddenly, the therapists were, you had your whole team of therapists gone.
Yeah. Well, I could, I could, you know, certainly put in language that would say, and I'm just talking out loud, you know, township reserves the, you know, the right as allowed under applicable law to deny any request for leave under this due to circumstances that cause safety and health issues for the township constituents. Or something along those lines.
Safety help, but I mean, that don't allow us to be able to perform required, required functions or required mandated responsibilities.
I got it.
I mean, and there's, you know, like I said, you know, the assessor's office would be one during the open period.
Yeah.
When people wouldn't be able to come in and appeal, when the, when the, when the appeal, appeal process is, is open. Like I said, G A, E A, they couldn't come in and lie here, they couldn't get in and be able to apply for things they need at that immediate time.
Right.
I mean, there's a number of things that I'm sure Paul can.
Yeah.
One of the things that you got to think about is, what if this, they can only earn 40 hours anyway? It's only a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
I know.
A week's a week. I mean, a week's a week, when you got G A or E A.
Well, I know, but as far as, it works pretty good in the fact that we have people that can cover different departments, so we could have somebody step in in an emergency or whatever, you know, to help this thing, that people get through the situation. Whereas Donnie has an I G A with three other townships, should be able to get some money, or all the townships should be able to share, kind of ahead of this curve, because if something comes up and they have two or three people walk out, well, maybe get somebody over there for it.
Yeah, I just, I would just want to be, I would want to have some sort of language that allows us to be able to, to be able to manage this in a, in a way that allows us to continue to provide those key services that are provided. Whether that's ever needed or not, that's one thing. But I'd like something in, I would like something, I don't know what the rest of the board can, however it comes, I'd like something in here that gives us the ability to ensure that somebody coming in that needs a service at that particular time can be taken care of.
Yeah, so I think we have to be, we have to be as specific as we can without, you know, basically giving the middle finger to what the requirements of the law. I mean, this is a very pro-employee, like, listen, if you have stuff that comes up that's an emergency, from your perspective, you get to take it. So I have no problem putting in some language and maybe giving examples. I think that before we invoke that exception, I think we should be careful and, you know, talk to myself or someone else just about that.
I don't think we'd invoke that unless we work with our council, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's fine. Now, getting back, though, to the part-time, front-loaded or accrue over time, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. Again, I think that if, again, if our part-time employees are, are kind of have set schedules, and it's, to a certain extent, we know it's going to be 20 hours a week, or between 15 and 20, that may be easier to say, hey, after your first, and by the way, remember, this would be after a year, we'd actually know what their schedules are like as well. It's probably easier just to figure out what that would be and front-load that, so that it's kind of like that use-it-or-lose-it. And then you don't have to worry about the roll over, you don't have to worry about the accrue. Just, I think, would make more sense, but that's a decision that I think I wanted to bring to the board's attention to make.
Paul, we're going to be administering this in a lot of ways. What, what, with the part-time, do we have, do we have a lot of variability in the hours?
We have three, well, off the top of my head, we have three part-time people.
And you will have bike and safety too. You'll have bike and safety too. Bike safety, you'll have, add another half, another person there.
Okay, well, okay, when we have those, we would have that to it. But, let me see, what were you asking?
Well.
Do our, do our, do our part-time people, from your experience, yes?
So the two that we have, one in food pantry, and one in youth services, have a set schedule. They have X, we told them when they took their job, you have X number of hours, 15 hours or 20 hours a week, period, that was it. So we know what they, the other ones that we don't, well, as you say, food pantry, food pantry, youth services, like you said, bicycle safety, are the three. And.
A part-time, a part-time therapist.
Do they have set hours, though? Or not set hours, but set expectations as to how many hours they're going to work?
It varies.
Okay.
So that would be one that probably have to be tracked and set.
Okay.
And it's not, I don't want to say it for Eric, but the thing is, it's relatively easy to report, unless it says how many hours they worked that weekend, and she just puts it into a bucket.
You could break it down. I don't, what you could do, again, there's so many different variations of this, you could break it down to those part-time employees with regular hours will front-load, and those part-time with variable hours, we don't, we would accrue over time. I assume bike safety is seasonal, so they may work 40 hours one, you know, in one or two months, but then not work at all. So if it's variable like that, or we don't know, then it's probably better on, for that category of folks to just do it over time, do it, accrue it over time.
Yeah, because we have, you know, somebody that comes in on a part-time basis as needed with youth services, and that could be three hours a week or 15 hours, just as far as many, how many.
I thought they're, so aren't they contractual, is what, Jill is contractual?
Yeah, because it was dealt with that.
Even with contractual?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, anybody who were. Yep.
So that would count as well. You just don't know on that one, that would be one that would have to go into the bucket.
Because we have, we have facilitators that are, we have Ed at part-time, and we have Renee full-time, but then she uses contract facilitators for special occasions, and those are.
Out at school.
Well, when you say contract, let me, let me make sure I understand. Are you talking about they have a contract with us to pay them? Like, we're still telling them, you know, what to, I mean, they're still our employees, but they're on a kind of a contract basis. They're not like through a staffing company at their employee.
No, 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 they're not a staffing company.
Okay, so.
Basically temporary part-time.
Okay, yeah, yeah, then we'd have to provide them leave benefits under this as well.
What do you, I mean, what do, what do you guys think? Each of you? I want to get some input from Dick and David.
Well, were we talking about the accrue as you go?
Yeah, accrue, whether it, I mean, he talked about accrue the first year, and then a, then a front-end loaded, that's for full-time or for part-time, or do you do accrue for, for both, and then a front-end loaded for full-time, but to keep accrue for both, for the part-time? I mean, you could do accrue all the way through for part-time, I suppose.
Could. You could.
That creates a little more responsibility for admin to track that, but
Right.
But if they're, but if they're largely, if most of them are largely set hours, it's not as, you know, it's not as more, I mean, you kind of know what to expect.
I think front-loading as much as you can streamlines it with the full-time employees and will simplify the business model.
Right.
I would tend to think the front-end loaded for both, but that, I mean, accrue, accrue for the first, first year for both.
Yep.
And then front-end load full-time, and I would maybe keep accrue.
For part-time?
Accrue for the part-time.
We do that. I mean, then you're not distinguishing between certain, again, that's an option, or you can distinguish between, you know, set, part-time, set hours or not. But then, then I think, you know, the kind of extension beyond that is then you have to, if I like a better term, probably outline that in their offer letter, like you are a part-time, you know, regular hour employee, and therefore entitled to.
There are two categories of part-time then, yeah.
Yeah, so otherwise, there might be confusion by someone who might think that they're, or, or hours may change. So I'm okay, I mean, I'd say most folks, probably, most companies that I have, break it down between full-time and part-time, meaning front-load and then accrue over time. But I just, again, talking to Paul, it sounded like at least a majority of the part-time were pretty set schedules, and if that's the case, then it's easy to figure out and front-load it. But, you know, if there's only three, then we're doing it for one, to do it for all the same. So to me, it's kind of six, one half-town and the other. I think it does come down to operationally figuring it out. And honestly, if you're figuring out their first year anyway, you kind of already have the system to figure it out after that, so. It's probably not that big of a change.
At this point in time, anybody that's been on the payroll for a year would front-load the 40 hours.
Yeah.
And then the same thing with the part-timers, getting more than a year. They'd be the only people that have started within, we're talking calendar year.
Yeah, well, because the law took effect in January, so, you know, no, no, because it took effect, you probably want to take effect, you know, effective as of January at first, to be honest with you. I mean. Right.
And we know that he works normal full-time shift. But you say that we have to accrue that, or can we just front-load it for him as well?
Well, he's brand-new. That's if you're, the first year.
First year, it'd be accruing over time, unless you already did it.
No, no, we haven't done it.
You know, so, yeah, I mean, I would just, like this, first year until, really, it's until the January 1st after one full continuous year of employment. So technically, I mean, by this, if you start in February, you won't be, you know, you won't be a full-time, you won't work for an entire year until February of next year. Then you'd have to wait really till the January, so you're almost working for two years before you're front-loaded. You're still earning it. You're still earning just as much as it's earning over time.
Yeah, so that's, that's the question. Is it, is it based on a, a working year? I mean, the number of, I mean, are they tied to the calendar or fiscal year, or is this tied to when you actually started?
This, we, well, the way this is drafted, it's actually tied to a calendar year.
So if somebody starts in November.
Yep.
Then they only accrue for two months, and then they get.
No, they have to, again, they have to work for, it's the first January, it's the January 1st after one full continuous year of employment.
Then it would carry, then they'd have to wait until, they'd continue to accrue.
They would have, from November 2023 to 2024, and then they'd still accrue over time that December, and then as of January 1st of 2025, they would get, 2026, whatever, 2025, they would have, they would front-load. The issue here is, at some point, you kind of want everybody to be on that same, so that you're not figuring out, well, Mary's going to roll over her anniversary years this day. going to roll over her anniversary years this date, and this date. So, you're at least after a year, kind of putting everybody on the same schedule. That technically administratively is a little bit easier, but again, that's a, that's a business decision. I'm just throwing out options.
So, from an administrative point of view, what would you, what would, what would you prefer? What would the administrators, the administration side prefer?
From what portion of this?
Part-time, full-time. What would you prefer? That you accrue with, then, for the first year, and then, and then go to a front-end loaded for both, or what would you?
Yeah, well, as you said, though, you can't, you can't front-load it until they've been here.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
Right.
But no, people that are already here, have been here for years, we front-load them 40, or they're, they're normal. They would do 40 hours.
Forty hours, yeah. Yeah. They get five more hours than they're normally entitled to, because this has, this isn't limited to 35-hour weeks, it's 40-hour weeks.
Law says 40 hours. So, so they'll get five days plus five hours. So, it's almost like giving them six a day. But to answer your question, the thing would be easiest for us, is to front-load all the full-time people at one time. Anybody we have to accrue to do it that way, and the people that don't have a set schedule for part-time, have Erica put it in the bucket like she does now with other stuff. Like, you know, she has to go through every month and add or subtract based upon.
So, you want two divisions of part-time?
What's that?
You want the more fixed hours for part-time, and they would then front-end load it, and then the other part-time that have variable, you want them to be done separately?
Yeah, it sounds like they have.
No, no, they don't, they don't. No, you can, you can split them up.
On the first year, they.
Not first year, this is, this is, everybody first year.
Is accrual.
Is accrual. At least, that's how it's drafted. So, so, and the, the reason why that typically is the case is because, I mean, listen, you could front-load it all you want. It's actually easier, but you front-load, and someone doesn't work out in 30 days, and they technically can take five days off, say they're sick, and get five paydays. You don't really want to do that, and so you kind of want to accrue them over time. So, that, that's why, at least the way this is drafted, it's accrual for everybody, basically, their first year, year plus.
So, the first year is accrual. Some people already well past their first year.
Yeah, yeah.
But the first year is accrual for any, so Romero would be accrual until, until January 15th of next year, or whatever, the year that he, no, would go. He'd get, he'd have to carry all over the.
Yeah, well, did someone start on January 15th? Like, did someone just start January 2nd? At that point, I just, I, I, I'm not going to put a footnote in here, I, you front-load on January 1st, I'm not going to.
Right. So, anyway, so he would be, and then, at that point, the question is, Paul, is that we're going to front-end every, anyone that's past that first year, question is, what do you want to do with the part-time after that first year? Do you want the part-time front-loaded, or do you want them to continue, to continue to accrue, or do you want to break out two types of, of part-times?
No, I, I think the people that have been here for more than a year, we just have to front-load, and they also have a set schedule, so we know what that is. So, that's why we can front them. The stuff that, from the people that are intermittent, like youth services, we would just have to accrue, and they're only going to be.
But you're, but you're, but you're going to be front-end loading them too, you're going to be assuming? You're creating two, you're creating two level, two types of part-time then?
Yeah.
You're accruing for one.
So, I think, I think what he's, I, if I can understand correctly, what we're talking about, what I think you're saying is, you are comfortable, even though you're breaking up part-time, you're basically breaking up part-times, meaning part-time, like, part-time regular schedule, part-time variable.
Okay.
That's fine, and it sounds like that we need to have two or three part-time fix, you know, fix, that like, we know what their hours are going to be. You can front-load those, that's fine, and then we just break it out into the variable ones. The only issue there is, we've got to be pretty clear when we hire someone, as to whether they're really variable or set hours, right? I mean, you, you just want to communicate with them, okay, welcome, you know, you're only going to be working in the summer, therefore, just so you know, you're going to be earning paid leave under this policy on an accrual basis throughout your employment. It sounds like there's one or two people. I mean, there's not like a lot, so.
I think that there's, like, there's a lot of.
Right. That, that's true, yeah, yeah.
So, if, we've already, at our previous meeting, approved these change from vacation to personal.
Yep, yep.
What we're doing now is, we would need to approve a, an accrual for the first year of, of one's employment, and then a, a front-end loaded for full-time, and, and, and regular staff.
Yeah.
I mean, regular part-time, and then a, an accrual for the.
Yep.
Irregular part-time.
Yeah, well, variable, uh, variable work hours, but yeah, that's the same, uh, that's the same thing. And that, that's not a, it's not a very difficult change. You just got to lay it out in the policy. It's not currently done that way, but that's pretty easy. In addition, by the way, to inserting some sort of carve-out for, you know, legitimate, lawful business reasons to deny, that we talked about.
You guys have, what do you guys think?
Well, is the, the policy, the policy, is the policy, is it five days? Is that what the?
It's 40 hours. It's five days, 40, well, five days, 40 hours, mostly, that's mostly, usually, five days is 40 hours, but I know here, the work, work week is 35.
But I mean, is that, that's also for the, the part-time?
Yeah, everybody, any employee. Yep.
Well, I guess that makes it easier then.
It came longer in some instances to get to that, to accrue 40 hours, to, I'm sorry, to work 40 hours, you get the one hour.
Yeah.
If they're intermittent.
Yep.
But they still get the four, the, the luxury of the 40-hour time off?
Ma, ma, max, if, if they work enough hours. If you're part-time, you're probably not going to get that.
Okay.
That, that's a reality, and that's why you wouldn't want to front-load 40, and that's why, for part-time employees, if they're regular, you can sit there and say, well, if it's 20 hours a week, it's two hours a month, they're going to, most they would ever get, unless they totally worked overtime, is, I can't do the math, but, you know, a day and a half, two days, two and a half days, whatever it is. And you front-load that for that regular part-time employee, after they've worked a full year. Then you kind of wash your hands of it, this is what you get, you kind of use it or lose it, and that next January 1st, they get that same amount, unless their hours, regular hours have changed for some reason, or they were converted to full-time or something like that. Yeah, it's, you know, I, you know, I could get on my soapbox here. This has created a lot of these discussions. Luckily, the township has a pretty generous existing benefit leave policy, whether it's sick, vacation, or personal. And so, believe it or not, it's, this is an easier change than a lot of policies that I've had. I know it doesn't seem like it, but a lot easier. Because honestly, you're located in one jurisdiction, some clients have folks in, you know, outside of Chicago, in Chicago, in Cook County, and it's just a minefield of where, what, what, what policy they have to have in order to comply with all three. They're all, they're all different, really.
Then there's one last, just to re, just to make sure I have my, my head around this. From like, on vacation time, if you, or in personal times.
Yep.
If you don't use vacation, or you don't use personal during the course of the year, you can, you can bank it up to a certain level?
Um, well, not, not if it's front-loaded. So, the personal days, under the new personal paid pol, personal, we call it paid leave policy.
Okay.
Okay. Former personal leave, I guess, policy, personal days policy. But the paid leave policy, it's, uh, it's, it's basically for front-loading, it's use it or lose it, within that, within that calendar year.
Okay.
Again, little bit of a difference in the, from the first year to the second year, right? Because you can accrue, you can accrue it and then roll that over, but then that stops once you get into that.
The first year.
Yeah. So, that, there could be from year one to two, they might have more than five days, because they've rolled over any unused from the fire, but that's, it just is what it is.
That's just for that first year.
Um, yeah. So, and again, understand that the paid leave can be used for any reason, sick, personal, family, you know, I have a, whatever, I need a mental health day, I mean, it really doesn't matter.
Before you touch base on the other things, do you, do we, should we, you want, should we approve, or have a motion to approve?
Yeah, how about I just like summarize what it is, and you can say whether you approve it, since there are a couple. But what I'm hearing is that there's consensus that, at least among the quorum here, that we're going to front-load, first of all, we're going to approve the fact that every, every new employee for the first year of employment, at least until the January 1st after one full continuous year of employment, will be accrued over time, and it's one hour for every 40 hours worked. After that one year, full-time and part-time regular employees, when I say regular, what I mean is those that have regular hours, will be front-loaded on January 1st of each year after one year of employment. And the variable employees, those that have sort of variable working hours that are hard to calculate, those will continue to earn paid leave at one hour for every 40 hours worked, and whatever that means.
Okay, a carve-out for?
And a carve-out, correct, good, thank you. And a carve-out for, as specific as I can be, to allow the township to deny a request for paid leave, under circumstances that either health, welfare, or the operations and the business necessities of the township are compromised by that person taking off.
Everyone, that, that discussion's good. If, if it is, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
For a second?
A second.
Okay. Neil can get the, the verbiage specifically from Jason, if you'd like to. A roll call?
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye.
I can plan on putting a draft together tomorrow, circulate it to Paul, and, yeah, and then we'll, we'll, we'll put together at least a, a summary of, of that for the employees, you know, just to kind of highlight that without making it appear like, I mean, in, in the end, they're actually getting more. They're actually getting more, the, the leave that they're entitled to, it's more flexible, less restricted on what they can use it for, and how much notice they need to give. So, in a way, it can be messaged in a kind of a favorable way. So, that's important. The, the other changes, I'll be honest with you, are just kind of consistent with normal updates that need to take place. The first update was to the family bereavement leave. There was an existing funeral leave policy, which I believe offered, I think, three days of, for 12-month period for employees to take off. So, that's still there. The family bereavement leave, it's kind of interesting, it's like the FMLA, and it offers, and it details certain circumstances where employees can take up to two work weeks or 10 days off. But what's unique is it follows the eligibility requirements of the FMLA. So, governmental entities like the township are actually covered by the FMLA. Similar townships, local governmentalities are covered by the Family Bereavement Leave Act. But, the employee also has to be eligible. In order for the employee to be eligible, they have to work at a place that has at least 50 employees within 75 miles. And so, it's another one of these laws, like the Family Medical Leave Act, that we kind of have to put in the handbook, but in reality, employees aren't eligible for it, because they don't work at a, at a, at a location that has 50 or more employees with a 75 employees. So, I put that in there just to comply with the law, but ultimately, it boils down to, if they want to take leave, they get paid bereavement leave of up to three days, which was existing, which existed prior to. So, it really didn't change in, in, in substance, it just changed in form, if that makes any sense. The only other change, I believe, the sick leave policy stayed the same. As I'm going through here, I think I took out school, Illinois' school leave, because you're under 50 employees. And the update to the VESA policy, which is the Victims Economic Security and Safety Leave Act policy, just incorporates more leave entitlement, not, not, not the amount of leave, but the circumstances by which someone can, an employee can take leave under the victim, under what I call VESA. So, it really has just been updated to include those additional leave, which, which, which honestly amounts to funeral leave, or leave to attend to circumstances involving crime, or, you know, death involving a, a family member due to crime and homicide. So, believe it or not, the, these types of laws are being updated across the country, and just Illinois is one of them. So, it doesn't change the amount of leave that they may be eligible for, it just changes the circumstances, or increases the circumstances by which they can take it. So, if you look at page 28 and 29, the old VESA had, I think, A through D or E, no, E, and I think what was added was F through, F, G, and H. So, again, it's just the, the conditions or the circumstance under which an employee can take leave or invoke leave under VESA was changed. So, that was just to be compliant with the new law that took effect in January, on January 1st. And I think that's, that's really it, if I'm not mistaken, that changed from the prior year. And hopefully, I haven't put you all to sleep. This was quite an interesting end of the year of changes. And so, what we would do is, I, I think what my recommendation would be, we essentially, and this is up to the township, but can distribute a, create a same, similar red line version compared from last year, and you can either circulate that to employees with a memo, or you can just circulate the memo, and just have them re-execute acknowledgement of the 2020, well, December 2023, or we can maybe do make it January 1st, 20, actually, I think it should be December 2023, because a lot of these, the paid leave law in Cook County took effect on December 31st of 2023. So, we can either give that everyone, just the updated red line, or we can summarize the changes in a memo and circulate that. But whatever we do, we should get acknowledgements from each of the employees once this has been issued, and put it in their personnel file.
I think we just go ahead and do the memo plus the red line version of this, because then they can resolve. I mean, they're, they're going to have questions, but it's very self-explanatory, you know, if you have the memo that you see.
I, I think putting a little memo with it would make sense to highlight.
We started it already, it's just, we, based on this conversation, it was going to change some of the content, so I didn't want to.
It's kind of true. I mean, like, the family bereavement leave, or former funeral leave, you had to rewrite the whole thing, even though there's, there's not a tremendous amount of change?
Yeah, yeah. I, so, it's kind of why we have an FMLA policy too, but no one would ever really be eligible for it. It's kind of this weird loophole, where the law requires you to actually have it if you're a covered employer, but that doesn't mean employees are eligible to take it. You fall into that little category of, because you're governmental, a small governmental entity, you're covered, but it doesn't necessarily mean employees are eligible to take. We still, I mean, they get the same policy, you know, they see, get the same leave that they got before, but I, I agree with you, it creates this circumstance where it says, well, well, you know, am I, am I entitled to this? You have a policy. And, and I guess the answer is, well, we have to. Put it in here, just like we have to have an FMLA policy.
This seems, yeah, seems strange, we have to rewrite the whole thing, when there's only a small.
Yeah.
Here or there that you could, that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't just change one set.
I didn't spend too much, I mean, that's like, I've made this change to almost every single handbook, I think it was a cut and paste, but, but I agree, it optically creates a circumstance where employees, like, well, why is this all being changed? It looks very,
It looks like there's a huge amount of change.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, you know, what we'll do, and we didn't do this in the, in the first draft of the memo, is, the memo was really more catered towards the paid leave law, but I think it would make sense to broaden that, to include these other two changes, and just sort of say, hey, we're doing this just because we have to, but you're still only entitled to three days of, I mean, let's be honest, you know, if someone actually suffers a circumstance like that, from my understanding, they could use, well, first of all, they could use the, the paid leave under this new policy, right? And if circumstances really warranted, if they wanted to use vacation, I'm sure that if there otherwise wasn't some sort of a logistical issue, you'd probably let them use that as well, or sick, or something like that. My understanding, the township isn't, well, I don't know, we'll have to see how they, how they implement these, these types of leave requests.
And then the one last thing is on the school.
Yep.
School leave to attend activities, wherever the case, where does that fall under now? That, that would.
I think we just took it out. I think we took out Illinois' school leave, because I think it only applies if you're 50 or more.
Yeah, so it was redlined, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's redlined here. I guess that was taken out because of what?
Just because it's not, it's, I don't believe you have more than 50 employees.
Oh.
And so, as a result, it doesn't.
So, there's no reason.
No, there's no reason to have it. That's, now that, yeah, that'll just create a, um, yeah.
Okay.
So, that, that's why that was taken out. That was a catch on my part when I was looking through it. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I'll, I'll put pen to paper on these changes, I'll circulate it to Paul, and we'll just take it from there.
You will approve at the next meeting, that you, all the changes, or is it, can these changes just be made as such?
I mean, you could, you, I think you've approved it based on these representations. If you wanted to, and I think what I would do is, I would probably, if we've gotten to the point of, these changes make sense, I'd probably implement it, and then just kind of retroactively approve it, if you want all the board members to see it then. Yeah. Just say, this has been approved, and if, if there's a change, then we can change at that time. There's nothing, changes, there's nothing that prohibits you from changing, you know, policies at any time you want, so.
I mean, the paid leave, I wanted to make sure that we approved that.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the other changes to the handbook, I, that we just go ahead and make these. The, the other changes to the handbook, I, that we just go ahead and make these changes?
Yeah.
And then in February, we can ask any questions and then just approve the overall changes.
Yeah.
Well, why, I mean, couldn't you approve that whole thing?
Yeah, you could.
Honestly, I'd like to see it in writing, though. That's what I like to see. When it's all, I mean, well, no, actually, he's got in here what he's, what the changes he's going to make.
Yeah, the cha, except for the, the only changes are going to be the paid leave, paid leave provision. So everything else can be the same. You just accept those edits and it'll be a clean version. So those, I don't think are going to change at all. It's just the three or four things we discussed today regarding the paid leave.
Do you guys, do you guys want to see the final copy and be able to read through it before you approve it, or do you, or do you feel comfortable enough approving, we've already approved that, that the paid leave changes. The other ones are, these won't change if we, if we say yeah. Or do you want us, do you want to, rather than just having this right now, or you're just making a decision, do you want to have time to read it, read through it?
I don't need to read through it.
I agree. I think everything that was stated is, the changes are just for that one part.
Right.
Right. So that, what we would be doing is have an emotion to approve the changes made to the, the, what is it, the funeral leave and the?
Sick leave.
Sick leave.
I'm sorry, sorry. I'm not sick. School leave.
School day.
And the VESA leave.
And VESA. So I, I would need, I mean, a motion to, a, a motion to approve the changes to the school leave, the VESA, and the, the funeral or, or bereavement leave.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, roll call?
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. I'll get this to Paul tomorrow. And again, I think that I will have a, what, what will be reflected is a, a clean version and a red line version, so you at least could see it. And, you know, if, God forbid, you want different language in the paid leave policy, you know, we can, we can modify it next, but next board meeting. But I would, I would suggest sooner than later, since this did take effect in January.
January 24th, I think officially is the date.
No, it's January 1st.
Oh, I read that.
Of 2024.
It's going to be done by January 24th.
Yeah.
Well, it's good. We just get different work.
Uh, no, I think it was effective as of January 1st of 2024. Cook County was effective as December 30, 30th, or 31st or whatever. But, you know, for all your existing employees, you're, you're kind of front-loading really. I mean, under the old policy, that's what you're doing anyway. So it's not, you know, I think it, it was one of those things that the, the Cook County law, I mean, we've known about the state law. Cook County came out with their law literally two weeks before the end of, end of the year. Like, they came out of left field. So, so luckily, it's the same thing as a state law, so it didn't take people by, too much by surprise. But, but I'll get that to you, and we'll, we'll just take it from there. And again, you, if there's like minor changes, we can make those change, you know, we can make those changes or approve them at the next board meeting if you want to. But I think it all is pretty much there. So, I mean, we've, we've, we've just made modifications to the handbook outside of the regular January 1st dates, you know, before. So, but yeah. Reach out if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer anything.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear the call.
All right. We'll go now to the, to the reports. The assessor's not here. She has her written report, which you guys have had a chance to look at. Is there any questions for me regarding her report? If not, okay. If not, will the clerks report?
We didn't have any FOIA requests this month. The agency grant committee met twice. We had nine presentations from agencies, current agencies, and then two presentations from new agencies. But we have a meeting tomorrow night when we're going to finalize all of our grant amounts for the upcoming budget.
Good. Thank you very much. Any questions for the clerk?
No.
If not, supervisors report. I will, in, I did want to kind of point out that the, this last year was a calendar year, was a, it shows some significant increases, pretty well across the board, demand for our services. If you look at social services, a couple examples, it's the general assistance since 2019 is up 225%. Emergency assistance since 2019 and now is up 100%. CETA programs up 170% and Salvation Army extensions is up 850%. And this is, we're seeing this, those are just some examples. We're seeing that across the board in terms of our, our social service programs. We did expand into the older adult, we, we expanded to include now older adult programming and support largely through assisting seniors with, ensuring that they, that they are aware of and apply properly for all the different benefits they're, they're entitled to. Two of the things that I thought were particularly stand out is with ship appointments, that's helping them identify what Medicare program is best for. And we did 112. Miriam is our senior programming specialist. And then we had application assistance and benefit assistance, appointments of around 229. And this is, you know, this is something we started about a year and a half ago. Food pantry, I think you're, you guys are well aware that we were over 900 families using the food pantry in December. The demand there continues to grow rather dramatically. As a result, we're adding a, a new checkout station, new shelves and new carts. We are shifting the scheduling from the front desk to food pantry over time here to take a little bit of the pressure off of the front desk, who's being, who's being taken away from other social service responsibilities. So that will be taken over by the, by the pantry itself. We're in the process of doing that. We'll be purchasing a forklift and industrial shelving for the warehouse storage area in the back, back area there. So that, because we are receiving so much food that it's becoming, it needs to be better organized and, 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 and maintained. And we'll also use that back space for medical closet storage and other, other similar items, even youth services equipment storage. And so not only we expanding our, our, our facility in the food pantry itself, but also in the storage in the back. And then we're looking at, this is not finalized, we're looking at purchasing an additional vehicle for meal deliveries and, and a backup for the box truck, because the box truck isn't always the best way to, to pick up or deliver things. And it also could be used by the, our facility maintenance manager as well, too. That is not finalized, but that's something we're considering. On the transportation side, we are almost at pre-COVID numbers in terms of transportation. As you know, a large number of the people that we, we transport are dialysis treatment, for dialysis treatments, so it's very essential that we provide it for them. We will have, we, we currently have three newer buses, two smaller buses and one large one. We have two other buses that we'll be auctioning off. They are both struggling, and both of them may, well, one of them we know won't pass the safety check, and that one will be auctioned off. The other one, most likely, will be auctioned off. We may add another bus this year, or we may wait another year for budget, for, for, just for budget management purposes. We can, we can operate on three buses. That's not the issue, but it would be nice to have a, a fourth for a backup. But I think we, we may delay that till next year, just for, for budgetary purposes. We are also doing, one other thing is the birthday postcards. We're going to be sending birthday postcards out to people that have ridden the buses. And the part of the reason is not only just an outreach in terms of happy birthday, but also if the card comes back, then we will know that they're no longer there, and we can keep our list cleaned up and more current by doing that. I would think it was a great idea. I think our administrator, that was his idea. He comes up with something every so often. The adult and family counseling, we are still trying to hire an additional full-time therapist. You approved the additional position. We have a waiting list of 15, 16, 18 people. And another therapist would allow us to get that waiting list down to single, very, very much close, close to covered, maybe, maybe just a couple single-digit waiting list. So we're, we're, we're working very hard at that. That's a difficult person to find. It's not an easy hire at this particular stage, but we are actively looking for a additional full-time therapist. I think in the youth services, as you know, the challenge course and bike safety course should be up and running this spring. We will be hiring a bike safety director, part-time. And Paul's got a couple potential leads as to where, where to go to, to get that. It will probably be a seasonal hire. We were looking at other options previously, a full-time that did bike safety and something else, but I think we're going to end up going with seasonal. The, the grand opening for that will probably be sometime in May or, May or June or something. We get it operating first and then have a grand opening. We did this last year, hire a part-time associate director. That has worked out very good. Ed has done a, a nice job. We have established our program, our school program with the junior, with District 2, with District 59, and we will be doing with 57, where we're doing a top-down approach, where we're going to the school districts and saying, here's the programs we offer, here's the hours we give you, tell us where you want, where you want this applied, rather than more of a helter-skelter, who, who wants it. We'll be doing something similar with 57 in that regard. The in-house programs are still managed on a, on a, on a, on a local basis, run an in-house basis. Renee sets up those programs, advertises, and people participate in the programs here. But the school districts now are taking a top-down approach to, to that. We, one new project that's been started there, well, two new projects have been starting there, is one, a hygiene closet. The junior highs have indicated they're having some problems with hygiene with some of the students, and so we are providing hygiene packages, or how would you say, package, general packages that can be used by the schools to provide hygiene products to some of the students. That is not all schools. That's, that's, that is not go top-down. That goes to the particular schools that have expressed concern or a need. And, and that, that, we're not sure exactly how that program is going to be funded. At this particular stage, we're probably looking to establish, like with the food pantry, a, a donation base, but that's still up in the air. But that program has been very well-received. I never knew that there was a need for that, really, but I guess there's some real issues. Sometimes kids coming in with just not, not, not having access to hygiene products. And the other thing is we've started student government days. I think you guys are familiar, and you're always willing to participate in them. Once a semester, we're doing a senior day, where the seniors come in, and they get a presentation, they get a tour, and then we'll do a mock board meeting. And that's the seniors. Right now, we're doing with Elk Grove. And if this continues, if this does well, we may expand then to Prospect or one of the other high schools, or Rolling Meadows. But right now, it's with Elk Grove. And then we, we are also doing, once a semester, the freshman classes. We do those at the, at the school. We were there just last week, where you, we come in, do a presentation to the, to the kids, talk about the township, and then our youth services does some interactive, how would you say, interactive.
Q and A, Q and A?
No, not Q and A. They actually do some things where they, 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 they show, they work about how they, how, how everybody's interac, interconnected and how, and so they'll, she has interactive programs and things she, that the kids all can participate in, beyond just the presentation that we provide. And we've had really, really good feedback on, on all of this. So we'd like to expand that if we can too at some point, but there's time constraints. We only have so much time to apply unless we expand the staff again. In, in admin, there, we, the passport demand has exploded and is being covered very, very well by our, our front office. We've, we've upgraded the finance software, new payroll processing, and, and we've, we've made some personnel changes. Mandy now is doing communications coordinator, and we added a new administrative assistant, Evelina, who is also doing the passports. Isn't she? Evelina is the one doing the passports. So real nice development, real nice sort of reorganization of staff that's made it more efficient and more impactful in some ways. I think that's, that's pretty well where we are right now. We are looking at adding evening hours, not just for the food pantry, but maybe that same night the food pantry is open, maybe we do leave open for passports, and the assessor's office may be open for evening needs. Because we found with the food pantry, that the, for people, that was very helpful for some people that have worked during the day and can't get over otherwise. So we may look at doing an evening when we have several of the departments open, and we'd like to do them the same evening for safety purposes. So, and you know, the therapists are kind of, whenever they need to be done. So we're not, that's not part of this, but it would be admin, assessor, and the food pantry. So that's kind of where we are in terms of construction. We, we, the youth, the, the youth community room in the back is, is near completion. The office space for youth services back there, they're doing the, kind of the, the final kind of clean-out demolition part, and they'll be moving forward to get that up. I would have hoped to get that done within the next month, where the office will be set up. We have the furniture ready to move in. The space will be, be, be cleaned up, ready to go, and we'll be getting some, some teaching or, or program aids in the office as well, too. The bathroom is ready to go. The next step after that would be the big storage room, where as we've talked about, we just clean that out, the floors, the walls, and kind of get shelving in there for storage for the food and storage for the medical closet and storage probably for youth services equipment. So that's where we are there. I mean, I, I think we continue to move forward. A lot of, a lot of good progress. Staff has been great. And, and we, you know, we, we added last year, like I said, a part-time youth services director. And this year, we've added so far a facility maintenance, who's director, who's turning out to be fabulous in terms of not only the initiative, but all the different things he can do. It's really filling in in a lot of ways. So that's proving to be a very, very good hire and really takes the load off of the administrators and also avoids us having to find these individual handymen and stuff like that. So it's working out well. Any, is there any questions for me? No?
No.
If not, is there a motion to approve the elected officials, or the elected officials' reports?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes. Let's just go on then to the next, our next section. Where are we now? Oh, is it the old business?
It's no old or new.
Uh, old business. We have, we have no, we have no old business at this particular stage. So we'll go to new business. The first item is the approver of Resolution 2023-07, to schedule the regular board meetings. The changes, there's two changes in there, actually. And, and one of them is, is a convenience kind of for me. And the other one, I just felt was probably more appropriate, given the, given the, the day that it was, was going to fall on. The first one is the, is the meeting in, in, in May. Ordinarily, it would have been on the, the 4th Monday, and that was, would be Memorial Day. We're going to move it to the Monday before. By sketch, scheduling purposes, I prefer if we could have it that Tuesday after the Memorial Day, at least, at least if we can make that change. And then if we have to relook at it again, we can relook at it again. But for right now, I'm asking for a change to, to May 28th. And then on December, we had it on the 23rd, and, and that's a Monday. You have the weekend, then you have the 23rd, then you have Christmas Eve and Christmas. I think a lot of people may be gone in that stretch. So we wanted to move it forward to the week before, the Monday before, so it doesn't conflict with Christmas as much. Was there any, is there any, I mean, is it, let's just do a motion to approve?
Motion.
And a second?
Approved.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion? Anybody have any, any problems with this right now? Once again, the December one, I think, is a hard change. The May one, if, if it looks like when the other guys are here next month, if there's a problem, we can, we can, you know, we'll just have to deal with it.
That's the only one that I potentially have a problem with.
All right. And we can, we can readdress that next, next, next month if, if we need to change it again. But December, I think the 16th makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
Okay. It's been, a motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call?
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, then we go to the tentative budget. So remember, we have a tentative budget this month, we have a, uh, updated tentative budget next month, and then, uh, we vote on the final, probably in March is what it will be, January, February, March. This initial tentative budget is, um, if you've gone through it, it's, I don't think there's anything that's particularly dramatically out of, uh, out of, uh, out of sync with what we've done in the previous years. I will mention one thing, and that is, um, when we went through this, we, it became clear that the, we, we've worked the reserves down, and we've worked them down to a level where I'm a little bit uncomfortable, and so we will probably be tightening up this budget a little bit for next, for the, the updated, uh, tentative next week. We are, the way this projects right now will be a little bit below a million. I'd like to have at least a, a million in reserves, which is six months of operating budget, and I'd like to get it back to 2 million at some point in terms of reserve, which is about one year. The reason why the reserves have come down like they would is because we knew we were gonna be burning down the reserves, we had excessive reserves, but we're, because of over COVID, and, uh, the last couple of years, uh, we've had change orders in the construction here, there were more issues with the building than we knew. Um, we also had, um, issues with, um, with, um, material cost increases, um, labor cost increases, um, as we've seen the inflation over the last year, year and a half. So, uh, the combination of, of those, um, uh, change orders and inflationary issues, um, brought in the final cost higher than we would expected with our, with our facility here. Um, I will point out that the storage room in the back, that big room we're doing, um, and part of the other expense, uh, is, is gonna be covered by a grant that has been provided, provided by the state, so that, that, that helps us. But nonetheless, I think the point is, is that, um, costs, um, have, uh, were more than expected due to inflation, due to change orders, and those change orders went, in some cases, were, were due to unexpected things, as well as issues with the building that we didn't know when we, we bought it, uh, from the village. Um, I think the other, um, issues that also, um, is we have been expanding our staff a little bit, uh, to meet, uh, the increased demand, as we, as I discussed during the supervisor's report, there is a, um, the, the demands for our services has ramped up dramatically, and we've, um, made some, some changes to, to meet that in terms of the part-time youth facilitator and a, and a, uh, facility manager, um, and we're still looking for a therapist and a part-time safety, a bike safety, um, 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 director. So those add a little bit of cost, too. I'm, I'm not particularly concerned, but I, I do wanna mention that we'll probably be tightening this tight, Paul and I met today, we'll probably be tightening this up a little bit, um, in order to, um, in order to make sure that we end, we end, uh, next year with a reserve in excess of a million. And then from there, we'll be working to increase it back up to 2 million plus, and, um, and that, that will, that will, that will be, we'll be able to do that, 'cause we won't have the same construction, the capital expenses that we've had the last couple of years. Is there any, any que, broader questions at this particular stage? You'll be getting the updated tentative, um, in a couple of weeks here, again, before the next meeting. If not, are there any questions for Paul? Nope, okay. Then I, can I get a motion to approve the tentative, uh, the tentative budget for, um, for the town, let, I'm gonna start with the town fund, a tentative budget for the town fund? Because that's largely what I've been talking about here.
Do we approve it with the general assistance?
I'm gonna do that separately.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the town, the town, the tentative budget, 2024, 2025 tentative budget for the town fund?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Now, um, I wanna then address the, uh, general assistance and sewer fund. Those are unchanged, and there's no, we're, we're well-funded there, and both the, uh, and the general assistance and the sewer fund, um, is a pay-as-you-go, so there's no, no issue there. I will mention with the general assistance, uh, fund, the new law is, allows us now to use some of the general assistance funds if we, if we're fully reserved, uh, for other social service purposes. So we will probably, since we're very well-reserved for general assistance, we probably will be using some of those resources, financial resources this coming year, fiscal year, for, um, some food pantry issues. For instance, the shelving and storage and the, the forklift. I'm not using them for any ongoing expenses, um, we're using them for one-time expenses that, uh, that we pay for and we have. So, um, we will be, um, the general assistance, uh, fund, we will be using some of the additional funding, some of the additional reserves in general assistance for other social services related purposes, which we're allowed to do now. So what I'd like to do is get a, um, and then the road department, um, well, then I'll, I'll do that next. So the general assistance and sewer funds, if I can get a, a motion to approve the, uh, 2024, 2025 general assistance and sewer funds. Budget, or budgets.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, they've been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Once again, the general assistance and sewer funds, you won't be seeing hardly any changes here, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of the general assistance, we have the ability now to utilize excess funds for broader purposes, and we will be doing that. Um, okay, roll call.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Then they have the 2024, 2025 tentative budget for the road department, there are no changes there. Um, this is very straightforward. Um, we, um, are outsourcing, uh, all of our services at this point. Um, we are taking in more than we need for those expenses, but that's to build a reserve back up again. And we wanna build a reserve back up so that we are in a position to, um, uh, to, in the, within a five, probably five-year period, to be able to do a, another, uh, significant upgrade in the, in the roads, uh, the roads that we have responsibility for. Is there any discussions on that? No. If not, can I motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Once again, uh, we have dramatically reduced our expenses by outsourcing and closed, by shutting down the road, uh, department, and by outsourcing, uh, now what we're doing is we're using the extras, the, the funds, the excess funds that we're, we're, we're generating through our, our levy, um, we're using that to build a reserves back up to give us an ability to, uh, do the next phase of, of road, uh, improvements. All right, roll call.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, um, I think that's it, we already did the paid leave law and discussion and policy approval. Um, is there any discussion or comments from you guys or the trustees in general?
Uh, no.
No. Okay, I know that, um, the Mount Prospect is having their, their update, their community update or economic update breakfast on Wednesday. Uh, Trustee Burns and I are attending that, and, um, and, and anyone else who wants to, um, we can, the town, the township certainly will cover the cost of your participation in that. Um, we try to participate in those events whenever we can to stay, uh, current with what's happening in the, the villages around us. Um, I think that, uh, that should be, should be about it. Is there, uh, is there, if there's nothing else, um, do you have anything, Paul? Have a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1791.04]